Good evening, everyone. This is the March 4th, 2019 Budget Workshop Session of the East Long Meadow Town Council. I'll open the meeting now with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
During our moment of silence, we ask that you keep our first responders and our servicemen and women around the globe, and those affected by the tornadoes in the south, in your prayers and thoughts this evening. Pursuant to Massachusetts general law, this meeting is being taped, and if there is anyone in the audience who is audio or videotaping, please identify yourself. Doesn't look like we have any other folks here with us for that purpose. Okay, so we have a very focused agenda this evening exclusively to looking budget-wise at our FY '20 capital budget recommendations, and so we're moving to that. Unfortunately, our town manager at the last minute was not able to be with us this evening, and our finance director, Sarah Menard, is perhaps going to attend. She's had some family circumstances around sick children, though I'm not supposed to really disclose that, but we've all been through it, so she will be here if she can. So, that said, I know that we have the capital plan or recommendations before us, as well as we've had the benefit of both Denise Menard and Sarah Menard having the expertise of three folks from the community, all with deep backgrounds in appropriations and financial work and such, or other work for the town, Jean Delaney, Jim Broderick, and Jim Walsh. And so, I hate to catch you off-guard like this, but if Jean or Jim, if one of you could be so kind as to maybe give us an overview of the work you've done with the two Ms. Menards over the past month or so, we'd be appreciative of that.
Do we do it from?
Yeah, no, I would ask you to please come to the table for the benefit of Mr. Mackey, who's taping it.
Process. Are we gonna go down to process, ask questions? You said three.
I would like, I think the process will be, we'll, happy to hear the broad overview, and then if the council, I'm assuming, will want to have some questions and answers and whatever else. And then we have many of our department heads, I can see, in the audience, and we will be happy to hear any backup they'd like to provide as well.
Sure. Well, Jean and Jim and I were asked to join with Denise Menard and Sarah Menard to review the capital budgets for FY '20, and part of that process was looking at what we did last year, and then reviewing all of the department heads' submitted requests and justifications for those requests, prioritizing what came first, what came second. We had a chance to review that. We then had meetings with each of the departments and had a chance to go over those requests and discuss, you know, in a little bit more detail, the ins and outs and the ramifications of them. After doing that, we met as a committee and looked it over and tried to prioritize for ourselves, for the town, townwide, what might have to come first, what might have to come second. Some, there's kind of no-brainers to others, and I will preface it by saying all of the requests have merit. It's just that there's only a certain amount of money that the town can afford, and based on those guidelines, we utilized that to do a prioritized order in which we would recommend, and the recommendations are in order of funding. So, the first set of recommendations, in order of which we would recommend being funded, are from the general fund, so from the operating budget, and the next group is from the enterprise funds, and then the next group is borrowing, so, and other, or other sources. So, that is generally the process and how we wound up with what you were looking at this past week.
Thank you. I see we do have Ms. Sarah Menard.
Sorry.
I did explain your circumstances without trying to give away all of your privacy, but young mothers have none.
I'm sorry.
Please take your time. Okay, so, Sarah, just to get you up to speed a little bit, Jim has, I've asked Jim to give a brief overview of the process.
Sure. Perfect.
And how this page reads in terms of these funding sources and the priorities of, or the ranking of projects in the order that your committee recommends that they be funded.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you would like to add before the council kind of does its back-and-forth? Okay. I would agree with Mr. Broderick that every year, it's a dilemma when any municipality looks at opportunities or responsibilities for capital funding, that there are more meritable needs than there ever will be a pot of money for. So, it's always a difficult call to make to prioritize and pick which projects are the town is capable of funding in a fiscally responsible way, and it's unfortunate that we're not in a position, as are most of our sister communities, to grab hold of the entire list and give it some support. But that being said, I would open it up to anyone on the council who has a particular question, as well as, I stated earlier, that we have a fair amount of our department heads in the audience, so if anyone needs a particular backup from one of the department heads, I'm sure they'll be able to fill in wherever there's necessary.
Is it within your purview to not only look at the capital projects, but maybe thinking of ways that we can generate revenue aside from the traditional real estate taxes and so forth? I'm just thinking about.
So, from a planning standpoint, we did think of funding sources. So, from that standpoint, we did consider and talk to the different departments of whether grants are available or those kinds of things, and, for example, there's a life pack request from the fire department.
That's exactly what made me think about that.
Yes, and so being able to fund that out of the ambulance fund, which we could do that starting July 1st. So, that's why we wound up not putting it as a priority here, but once we've put a budget for the ambulance fund, because it's the revenue generated from the ambulance, we can spend out of that. So, those kinds of things, we did ask, which is why several of the items, you'll notice that we had recommended to be funded, but from other sources, and that's why that we had that.
Okay.
So, we did to that extent.
To follow up on that, then, Chief Morset, you're confident that when you get to July 1, having had the benefit of, at that point, almost a year of looking at the in and out, the billing and revenue for the ambulance, that you'll be able to make that purchase from those funds?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And my FY '20 budget has expenditures, I have two separate budgets going forward now. I have the fire budget, which has always been there, and I'll have an ambulance revenue account budget special, I don't know what the fancy name is.
It's called receipts reserved for appropriation.
Right, yeah, it gets appropriated through the budget process, but it only can be used for the ambulance stuff. So, there's about $120,000 built into that request, thinking it's all strictly damage revenue. At that point, I'm there now for revenue so far for the year, and between now and July or when the budget's approved, we will have the money needed for both the capital request, the 47 for the capital request, and the operating budget that I requested for next year.
Excellent. That's a pretty quick turnaround on returns for our residents. That's very nice.
A question, and Jean, it's opportunistic you're here. Has the council and disability council, have they met yet to look at their capital needs?
Not that I'm aware of, and I'm not aware that we've got that council up and functioning yet.
Okay. The reason I ask is, as part of the discussion we had about the creation, we also like to make sure that you come back during the capital planning, the budget process, and recommend or prioritize issues that you have seen in a town that we may not see.
Yes.
And come back to us with what you think might be an appropriate budget to deal with those, so we can deal with them in some of the capital projects.
Yes.
I don't see any of those on here, or any indication that that was looked at.
No. The commissioner has not yet gotten up and functioning, so.
Okay.
It's a little tough to make up a priority list when you haven't got everybody there yet.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Do you want to, are we gonna go down the page?
Sure.
Maybe ask a way to approach it.
Okay, so, write down the, I just wanna make sure we're looking at the same document, Tom. This one here.
The recommendations.
Yeah, okay, so, the, under the health department, the Allen Street landfill closure, the requested amount is $150,000, and the recommended funding, which is a priority one, is $75,000. It's pretty obvious that's under a Mass DEP mandate of some nature, surmising.
Yeah, Denise did mention part of that in the last meeting. She spoke to that, talking about the need to make progress, to move forward, to start addressing the issue, so I understand the need to go down.
Yeah, we're hoping that this is sufficient to show good faith and to move forward.
And actually, I believe DPW had reached out to Mass DEP, and that they were happy with that.
And though you can't look into a crystal ball, Mr. Fenny, assuming, knowing that you'd use this $75,000 to do.
Get design work and things like, get the ball rolling anyways.
A good chunk of the work. How long would that satisfy the powers that be?
As long as we start doing something, like you said, as money becomes available, like the Summers Road landfill, we did work when money was appropriated, so as long as we're showing some progress, moving forward, and if some years it's too lean to do any work, I will pass that along to the DEP also.
Fair enough, thank you. Under the fire department, the ladder truck for the $214,787 for the year three of the five-year lease, that's pretty much, as you said, Mr. Broderick, a no-brainer.
Yep.
And we certainly see that around town, probably more often than we would like in terms of, we don't wanna see any bad issues befall folks, but it's certainly getting used, chief.
Initially, we were, when the ladder came in, we did increase the response for, we were doing every medical with it, and my thought was, within the department, was put the miles on it while you still got that first-year warranty, while you got the big warranty.
Yeah.
Bumper to bumper for that first year, and if it sat as just a regular engine, you're not gonna use it as much. And, you know, there's been some stuff that we've been able to make sure got taken care of, and I'm not sure that would've happened if it was just, went out on 100 runs for the year as opposed to what it's done. It has been tailored back now, the only time you'll see it go out is either for an actual fire alarm or a fire, or if it's a major, major, major medical event, and there's more hands needed, so you'll see it for that. But, so, it's, it's, it's put some miles on, which is good. We were able to take care of a few things that probably wouldn't have happened, so that's done well.
Good. Also, under fire department, the third project is the ambulance for $91,947,000, and this is also year three, oh, it's a three of a three-year lease.
Yeah, that's a final, right.
So, this is a final payment, which is wonderful.
And just so everyone knows, so you're not thinking later about it, but the ambulance fund, you can't spend money out of it until the budget's been approved for it.
Correct.
So, that's why we can't pay for that, that out of there at this point, because there's no money yet.
Yeah, understood.
Quick question.
Sure.
Just refresh our memories, I believe that these are both lease option to, lease buys, right? So, there's no buyout after that, it's automatically ours.
Correct.
Yep.
Item number four, under the police department, is replacement of three cruisers for $132,267, and the recommended funding from the capital committee is $82,000.
So, we are recommending to purchase two cruisers instead of three, and on the original request, the third vehicle, one of the vehicles was a truck, and we are recommending no truck to do just the traditional cruisers. And so, the $82,000 is enough to cover that.
Yeah, I'd like to speak on that one. The cruiser replacement, it was mentioned in the town manager's notes, or the committee's notes, I'm not sure who wrote the notes, that no truck. The truck was not mentioned in the chief's proposal, it was three cruisers. So, I've got it in front of me. It says three cruisers, no truck. So, it must've been spoken about in the process, where I know it's been under discussion for a couple of years, where we talked about getting a utility truck for handling bicycles and road equipment, things of that nature, and possibly going through with some training issues with it. But I'm not comfortable going down to two. Two's always been a standard in this town for as far back as I can remember, probably 10 years, and eight of those being on capital, and one of them last year on the council, we've always given two, except for one year where we were giving one to the police department. This year, one of the reasons why we went to in-house dispatch was to free up an officer. By freeing that officer up, we now need a cruiser for this person, and we're gonna hamstring ourselves here. In addition to that, we have three officers, which are gonna be graduating from the academy this spring, and my concern is, I don't want to see used equipment, old equipment, or equipment with $150,000 miles being driven by the police department in response to a safety issue. So, I'm not sure what the rationale was for going down to two from three, but I certainly would support three.
I can just give you a comment. The third vehicle, it was in the detail of the request, broke down the type of vehicles of the three. One was a Dodge Charger, one was an Explorer, and one was a Ford F-150 pickup truck. So, it was a pickup truck, and I don't think it was, and I may be wrong, but my impression was that that was never destined to be a first responder vehicle. So, you know, again, it looked like the absolute need was for two, and that there's, we also got the benefit of an inventory of the vehicles with the police department, and it didn't look like you'd be keeping someone in because of two versus three from our vantage point. So, that was our rationale.
Yeah, I know you had a chance to speak directly with the chief, and I think he's here.
Yes, he is.
Yeah, he's in the back. I'd like to hear from him as to whether or not that two is gonna meet the needs of our town, or is three really the way to go? And I don't mean to put the chief on the spot, and I know you've had a discussion with the town manager and the committee on that issue, but.
Great, so, we did have a discussion, and we did put our proposal forward, and Mr. Broderick has said he's pretty on target with it for the most part, but the needs of the pickup truck is, it's there. We figure between what we're advancing in the department and our bicycle program coming up this summer, we have training issues, we now do our own training, and we haul our guys back and forth along with the equipment. We also have our UTV vehicle we have purchased, and to move that from one location to another, even though it's road-worthy, obviously, and it's registered, trailing net sometimes might be needed. Along with emergency, emergency use, as far as confiscating evidence, sometimes it requires more than just what we have for cruisers. We've relied on a DPW in the past, nothing wrong with that, but they come with a price tag, unfortunately, or fortunately for them, but the point is, we're relying on them. We also do, there was one other thing we were involved in, oh, for winter time, too, we have the advantage of having that vehicle at our disposal for bad weather and stuff along that line. So, there is a need for it. We put our proposal together for three cruisers. We do have someone coming out of the academy, a set of guys, that will be adding to the shift complement. As you look at, I think you have a copy of our fleet schedule there?
Yes.
So, I think it breaks down how we were planning on moving cars in and out. The town has asked, other departments have asked for us to utilize some of our cars, which we have done in the past.
Yeah.
Do you have the list?
No.
Actually, I'm sorry.
We don't have it.
Okay, we can provide that.
That'll paint a pretty good picture of what the status of our cars are right now. And currently off the list, we have six first-line response vehicles, but any given shift, we could have, well, there are shifts where we have two supervisors and three patrolmen, so there's five of the cars being used right there, adding another person requiring the six, but if you look at the mileage on some of the, a couple of the cars.
I'm sorry, chief, we don't have that information.
Okay, I'm sorry. So, anyways, if you have that breakdown, that might answer more questions for you, and how is that planned on being repurposed, so.
Sarah, will you, excuse me, be able to provide that for us?
Yes, yep.
So, I mean, that's all right, nobody, yeah, so, no sense of trying to explain something, the picture.
Yeah, we don't see.
So, if you have any other questions, I'd be more than happy to.
Mike? Thank you. If, by not purchasing the third cruiser at this point in time, it's really basically just being deferred till next year, right?
I would think so. At some point in time, I mean, we do put a lot of miles on our cars, they are being used 24/7, so eventually it's gonna catch up. What we're getting, this current year is administrative vehicle, which is not a first-line response, so we're, out of the two we anticipate in the next month, there won't, the only one will be a first-line response, and we'll repurpose the administrative car that we're replacing out into the other departments. So, yeah, we're getting two now, but they're not first response lines.
So, you know, there's a lot of use that that truck could bring. Like you said, you know, your training requirements have changed now where they're being done in-house, and there's a lot of equipment to haul to and from ranges. The ATV, being able to move that and pull it with a trailer, and that truck could be used as a first responder vehicle if it's outfitted that way, in good conditions or bad conditions. Obviously, it would be more attractive when, you know, last night, for instance, when the weather's down. I would think that some of those fees with the other cruisers was offset when you bought chargers versus the SUV. A charger would cost less money than an SUV, so if the truck costs a little bit more, it's really kind of a balancing act. Being part of buying cruisers for police departments, I've always been able to do better buying three vehicles than two vehicles with the seller. So, I would say at the least, we should be purchasing three vehicles, and I would highly entertain bringing a truck, making a truck part of the fleet, if you will. One more piece I can add is that I've operated numerous vehicles up there, and some of these vehicles with 100,000-plus miles on them that are servicing our community from a first responder standpoint with either police or fire, I don't think that's a good place to cut, because if you spend some time in those cars and you see how they handle from a safety standpoint versus a new vehicle, I don't think we're really gaining anything by deferring the purchasing of one of these vehicles to year two. So, I would advocate to, I'd like to see a truck myself, and at least three vehicles. Thanks.
I have a question to Mike. Do you feel, looking at these figures, that it's worth asking the chief to talk to the seller or try to price it to see if we can maybe get some economy, you know, maybe a better savings for these three vehicles?
These are all state contract, remember?
Oh, just state contracts.
Okay, okay, so there is no economy in scale.
Yeah.
If you buy like 15.
Oh, 15, okay, three isn't a magic number then, no.
So, there's one more piece of this that I thought, and it's, you know, there's other department heads that need vehicles at this, as well, and I'd rather take our cars that have more mileage and use on them and pass them down to a situation where it's not involved, you know, an emergency's not involved, or they're not first responders, but, you know, keep those cars up, they're running, I don't think I'm exaggerating, at least 30,000 miles a year, so, and they're not operating under average conditions, so they're really taking a pounding. I don't know if anybody else has any questions.
The only thought I had is, I know we have a pooled insurance fund and stuff, is it worth exploring that, maybe for fiscal 2020, 21, and beyond, and working with other communities to see if we can reach a number of saying, okay, Hamden needs three cars, we need three cars, Springfield needs 12 cars. Okay, I see, I see your expression, I guess.
I'm not saying it's a bad, I never know to be done that way.
I'm just curious to see, I'm thinking about it collaboratively.
They actually get the cars, everybody's got, everybody's got a unique spin on their cars.
They do?
The cost has, the cost incurred in some of the cars is driven by the lighting on them and stuff like that. The base, the car is pretty much set price. I know they come in all black, to be honest with you, and they paint the doors white on the common colors you see, so it's kind of weird that that happens, but I've never looked at it that way. I don't know if the, I don't know if the dealer would entertain that type of co-op, I guess you're trying to say, like a buying.
Yeah.
You're on their timeframe and funding and all that stuff, it's.
I didn't realize, because of the state contractor, with certain state mandates, okay, police car, police car, police car, East Long Meadow car, like Hamden or Wilbraham and all alike, but there's not, there's, aside from the name, East Long Meadow, there's other customizations.
Yeah, there's the decal-ing that goes into it, the lighting, everybody has a different idea on their lighting requirements and stuff like that. And how you outfit the cars, what you put inside them, the mounts and stuff are different for every department, or can be, let's put it that way, I'm not saying they are for sure, but.
And there can be differences in the suspension systems and things like that, depending, I mean, if a car was used strictly to maybe bring a prisoner to court, it might be outfitted different to save money, but.
And we can't use like a former police car, repurpose it for, as an admin car?
We can and we do, actually.
We can and we do?
Yeah.
I think one of our last vehicles we repurposed, I went to the fire department, it was a Ford SUV, and I think Chief Morset is, I can't speak on, but my indication, he's very happy with what he got for a product, and the end result is the guys are using it, and there's been, we gave him one of our better cars, because he knew that he would be putting on a little bit more miles than the average repurposed type thing, so, as I'm telling you, I'm here to work with the town, and if you think you have a better way to save money, then I'm willing to listen to it, but we've been repurposing cars, and I think if you get a copy of, they have broken down the thing here, they'll kind of show you how I lay out the cars and what I've done with it, and maybe you get a better understanding of what's being requested.
And if you look on page two of the recommendations, you'll see that the second item from the bottom is vehicle replacements for building commissioner and the IT department, that the committee is recommending repurposed police vehicles for those.
So, those two, that you are so far recommended would be repurposed to those uses?
Yes.
Do you know how many miles your car has on it approximately?
Actually, the two that are getting replaced this year is what we would be recommending, because we already have them.
Miles on your cruiser? Yeah, it's 120, 120,000, 121,000? I mean, it's 2012, so, I mean, it's not too bad. The other cars are not gonna keep, that's a little mileage for that year. I'm looking at one car that was a 2015 SUV, a Ford, and it's got 116 on it. Other cars don't have as much, but they get used, is my point, so.
And they get used hard.
I was gonna say, chief, does that include the two that were approved last year, that you're still waiting to take?
I'm still waiting to take those. So, one of them's. So one of them's earmarked for me and repurposing my car into a, whatever the town decides. My, they've been asked, I've been asked by numerous department heads if they had a, if I had a car available. Well, I, it's not my decision to say if I have a car available, but I can only tell you that through what we've done in the past, there has been cars available. It's certainly cheaper than trading them in to the dealer at the time you take over your new car. They don't give you too much money for them and I'm thinking of the, you know, so repurpose them ain't a bad idea, but I'm not the car keeper, the gatekeeper of all that stuff for the town. It's up for you guys to decide how you, the cars be repurposed, if at all, but I'm just.
Well, is it fair to say that if we bought two cruisers this year, we'd be looking at four next year?
If we went down to two this year?
To catch up?
Probably, because again, this year, we brought up, what I'm still waiting for is administrative car and one marked cruiser, but if you follow the plan, you have to have backups too. You have to have, we had an accident with one of our cars and it's been out for three weeks. So we're stuck, you know, using what we have for vehicles, which is fine, but I'm just saying, you need to have, you need to have, you just can't go by what you have on the road at that given time and they break down accidents and stuff like that. So this year, we are waiting for two. One of them's an administrative car and then moving forward, it depends on what you guys decide here for this capital planning moving ahead.
Yeah. Chief, also for the sake of discussion, I haven't had some experience working with MHQ. That's part of the normal process though. Since you cannot order the cars till after July 1st, the turnaround on those depends on the municipalities. Obviously, someone with ordering 15 or 20 cars, like a city or a big municipality, is going to get preference over your two. So you kind of, you get pushed to the end of the line, so by the time you get the cars, it sounds like it is now, it's in, this year's budget process.
Right. It's almost a fiscal year behind.
Right. So we're kind of out of, yes, we're kind of behind their timetable, where we sit on the pecking list as far as ordering two cars versus 15, how they, how they, you know, prioritize their listing, yeah. But there is, July 1st, I'm sure there's a rush of cars being ordered because everybody got new money. And so we did our combi due diligence here and we got our cars, I think November we ordered the cars and we're still waiting, but.
Just had a question on the F-150. Will that be a vehicle that's a patrol vehicle that's also used as utility or will it be an, a utility vehicle exclusively for the police department?
Do you mean will we share it?
No, I'm just meaning, I mean that you have a, you know, a police car, okay, that used, you know, on patrols and serves those purposes. Will this vehicle also be set up as needed as an emergency patrol car if you had to use that F-150 for that?
It could be used as a first-line responder car, but that's not going to be the main purpose of it, but yeah.
But it'll have the lights?
It won't have a cage in it. It won't have a cage, it'll have light, lighting to it, it'll have graphics to it.
Okay.
The only thing it won't be used for is prisoner transport.
Right.
Because there's no space for it.
Well, there's no cage.
No cage.
Not the extended cab, be up there.
Well, there will be a, kind of like a crew cab. I mean, you probably pay more money for, Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, for not, not a cab than a.
Yeah, they're all about standard these days. The backseat, it just.
It's crazy, but you would think you'd be paying more for, but anyways, it'll set up to carry four, four to five people, no problem. But we can cut corners, we can de-light it a little bit, you know, we could not decal it, or we could bring that price down.
No, I'm just curious what the, what the end game is for it. Is it going to be used like, hey, hey you, that's available car, like the accident that just happened, would you be able to use that for somebody going out on patrol?
Yeah, we could use it, yeah, we can use it for first line response.
It's redundancy of one of the cruisers, even if you've got a brand-new cruiser and it's in an accident the following week, you could put that pickup truck into service.
Well, that's what I was wondering in your budget, do they have that?
It's not just for.
Is it going to be set up for that purpose if they needed to?
Yes.
He can set it up any way he wants.
No, no, but within his budget, you know, how do you set it up then?
Yep.
There's no votes that need to be taken at this point.
I don't believe so.
I would imagine it's just open discussion to get everything on the table.
These are recommendations.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Are we moving on then to the next?
Well, on police.
Okay.
The thing that's not mentioned here too, that came off the original request was, while we're on police, is feasibility study for the expansion of the police department. That was requested last year and we opted to not fund it at that time. I think things have changed. We recently had a discussion with Senator Lesser in a meeting and he made it very clear that the 1.1 that we've been told is a possibility coming to the town for the last several months is just that, a remote possibility, and it's sitting on the governor's desk and it may or may not ever see the light of day. So with that said, I hate to see us keep getting behind the eight ball. Since it was not recommended, I'd like to see that get, put back on the recommendation list and fund the feasibility study, which will give us insight into what repairs are necessary for the police station, what maintenance could be done to improve the status of the police station or start over. And that's really what the feasibility study does. It gives you all those different scenarios and tells you, can you repurpose the building you have, what's it going to cost and, or you just start over and junk that one.
Absolutely, and we had a long discussion with the chief about it. It's, it's a good idea, the possible grant is a, is a great idea. I think where we were coming out is until you, until you actually, if we were to find out that we actually have some grant money available, then instead of waiting a whole another fiscal year in order to fund the feasibility study, it might make sense if the grant were up and approved to do it on a, either a free cash basis or something that just jumpstart the 25,000 rather than put the 25,000 in now and wait, and who knows? It could be next year, it could be the year after, it could, it's unclear when those funds would happen and it did sound like you'd probably want to wait until you, though some monies were available to help you with the, with the either replacement or, or, you know, upgrade of the police station. So we thought if good news happened, the worst case is, we wouldn't, we wouldn't wait, we would recommend maybe a transfer and, and start the feasibility study sooner, but not knowing and thinking that it could be next year, it could be the year after, you know, wait on the feasibility study. It's just a, it's just a call, it's, you know, it's your, you make the decisions.
Well, having, having some background and knowledge on how these things progress.
Sure.
Feasibility studies take anywhere from eight months to a year before they're, they come to fruition. So we're really talking a long ways out. So that could be paid for at a later date through a free crack, through free cash or through a grant if it ever gets approved.
Right.
So to start the process now doesn't hurt anybody. It, it just helps the town move forward with the understanding of what the possibilities are. I, I don't want to wait and find out, you know, a year from now that we're still in the same boat, that we haven't funded it and we have to wait eight months to a year to find out what options we have.
So if I may ask, so one of the things that, and I'm sorry if Jim had already brought this up, but we were trying to be cognizant of the bottom line of the budget as, since our understanding was that the council wanted pretty much to stay as level as possible for funding, except for contractual obligations, that's why we stayed at that level. So we've talked about some of the council members feeling that they wanted another police vehicle, the possibility of this feasibility. So does the council want us to, to add all this? Is this the group feeling of the council or do we want to wait until we get to the end to say, okay, let's talk about adding these things and let's see where the figure falls? Because we, we just want to make sure that then we're all on the same page.
I can speak for myself, is I agree with what Jim said and I think it should be at the end. I mean, I'm looking at the letter from November 30th from Chief DeLassio and yes, you did request, as, as Tom pointed out, the 25,000 for the feasibility, but I also recall from last meeting, we had Senator Lesser and I really want to make sure that we stay in touch with his office, that he does in fact talk to the governor's office and find out where we are timeline-wise to get the governors to sign that check. Because, you know, it seemed to say that it's going to be done, I think that should be done. I mean, you know, we should get that 1.1 million or at least a good chunk of it. And I think we need to talk to the senator's office and even if it means talking to other, you know, our reps, to find, you know, to put some pressure on the, on the governor to say, yeah, what's up with this? Give us this before we spend the 25,000. Because I think if we have that in our budget, it seems to, I, I, again, I agree with Jim in the sense that it's as important and I agree with Tom in the sense that it's a timeline, but I don't want to send that message out until Senator Lesser does that due diligence and finds out where we are for real with the governor in getting that check signed. That's just my take.
My understanding is once the, as the governor was saying, that it has to be approved to, to go out and get bonding for it. That's still a several-month process of actually doing the bond. So once we know that, yes, that we are on that docket, there's still several months so we can, as we had discussed, do a free cash transfer to start it.
At this point, we just don't, we just don't know where we are.
But right now, it's, yeah.
We just got this kind of promise about 1.1 and it's just sitting on the island of misfit toys, we don't know where it's at. I think we just need to get some sense of direction and, and do a follow-up with Senator Lesser's office. Oh, remember our, you know, where are you? Have you spoken to the governor's office? Where are we in this process before we go, yeah, you know, to heck with it, we're just going to do the 25? So I have to agree with the importance, but I agree with this, with Jim Broderick in the sense of how it should be dealt with.
Sarah, is there a possibility, I mean, 25,000 is a substantial amount of money?
Yes, it is.
But the free cash could fund that at a later date if we opted?
Yes.
So if we, we just took it out of the capital and we pay for it in free cash in a month or two months from now?
Yep.
That's a possibility, right?
Absolutely. The only period of time that we wouldn't be able to use free cash is from July till end of September, beginning of October, when the new free cash gets certified. But every year, we usually have at least a million or sometime up to 4 million available in free cash. So 25,000 is something absolutely that free cash could, could handle. And worst-case scenario, if you really wanted to, technically you could also use the stabilization fund as well, which does have that. I wouldn't recommend jumping right into there. I would use free cash first, but that is available. So we do have money that we could use at a later date.
And we have three months, basically, to make a decision before the free cash is frozen during the audit process.
Right, and then we have the three months or so that we can't, and then we have another nine months that we can use it. So, and depending on when the state decides what they're going to do, like I said, the bonding could take several months, that it should be more than enough time for us to do what we need to, just get the ball rolling.
So I have a question regarding the 25,000. If the council was to agree to allocate those funds for the feasibility study and the governor came through after the fact, is there a way of recouping that 25,000 or being able to use it somewhere else?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Could we replenish the 25,000 if we allocated from free cash and then six months down the road, the governor comes through with the grant?
We could do that.
We can put 25 back, right?
Yeah, we could do that. We could make it part of the grant itself, depending on what the timing is for all of that. The only essentially, essential problem would be if it's, it's too far away from each other. Then you're going to have a lot harder time, I mean, in your head, you could say essentially it's to replenish, but not in the same fund. Does that make sense?
If it was too far ahead of the, too far ahead and we lost it, at least we'd be way ahead of things in, in getting this department, you know, this building that was built basically in 1974 and has HVAC issues and plumbing issues and, you know, we need a feasibility study just in terms of expansion, you know. We were talking about putting a fence up in the back to resecure the building at some point in time and if we don't know if we're expanding the building, the worst thing to do would be spend money.
Put a fence.
Putting up a fence that we're knocking down and, so I kind of look at the 25,000, especially if, if we're not going to lose it, if the governor does kick the money, that would, in essence, it might be a good thing to consider.
Yeah, I don't think it's a waste of money.
But I, I have one more question too, and it's because what comes back to mind to me was, there was a point in time when the cells were not compliant at the station and maybe you can give us a little update on, on that because wasn't there a half a million dollars hanging out there for certain things that might not have to be done any longer?
Excuse me, right, so speaking on this topic, on the five-year capital plan, which is not a discussion for tonight, but I guess you're going to take it up at some point in time. I think there was, if you, you mentioned the fence there, there was a $36,000 item on that list for replacing the fence. I took it off, I think last year or the year before, in the sense that putting it back up wouldn't be the right thing to do for various reasons, for maybe a possible expansion versus the way we plow that back lot, there's just no place to push the snow and it's up against the fence, so we had to relook at that. So I took it off and that's fine. So there is on that five-year capital also, not that you mentioned that, is $577,000 worth of cell renovations. That started from my predecessor, the state comes in and they whack you on violations or observations. Violations, we must correct, observations, we should correct because they're on record. I've worked with Bruce Finney in the Department of Public Works over the past year to modify some of the observations that were really standouts that we thought were critical and exposing our liability and we've done that for a lot, a lot, a lot less money. I think we're, we're under $20,000.
It all depends.
For right now, we're under 20,000.
Yeah, and all these repairs are done out of our operational budget too, so we're very mindful and working with Jeff and, like you said, we usually maybe, and it depends on what we're doing, like a toilet up at the police station, I believe Joe was like $3,000 alone to replace. So we typically, we did two this year, some vents that needed some suicide prevention items on it, just little things here and there, but like you said, we're limited with those, those items based on our operational budget.
So looking at that number on the five-year capital, I didn't put the 577 together, maybe Bruce can expound how they, him and the former chief got to that point, but from my knowledge moving forward, since I've been in that position, based on working with the DPW, making some modifications up there and borrowing anything out of the state that says you have to do something that's going to cost $500,000, I'm looking to take that off the table. Again, another, another capital project that's earmarked towards the police department, I'm looking not just to spend money for the sake of spending money, I'm looking to operate under the financial constraints that we have, at the same time work with other departments, which we have very well. The sheriff department has come to bat on this renovation also and provided some metal sheet working that they really have been very generous about and we're getting things done up there. So when you, when I look at my requests moving forward, you know, there's numbers on there that I'm not responsible for, that I've taken off the table, that I recommend taking off the table, whether we keep them on there or not, that may show in your picture moving forward that maybe if that's not on the table, we have room to wiggle and we don't have to consider it. That's up for you to decide. So looking at the overall, getting back to the $25,000 feasibility study, if I may, I guess my question to the town is, are you committed to looking at renovating that building no matter where the funding come from? I know every year, departments put in for renovations to their buildings and they get passed. It's time, I think, that this department looks at our building and says, what has to get done? And are we going to take it off the table again like we did last year and wait for the governor? I can only remind you that that 1.1 million that we put together for a number is not guaranteed if the governor okay's it. My understanding is he can give you 400,000 out of that, he can give you 300,000 out of that, he can give you whatever the number is, but what he gives you is up to him and it's not mandated to give you the whole funding. So there is a question, do we put something forward now and without any kind of funding from the state? Do we have a commitment from the town to, yeah, if the state don't do it, we're going to do it? And I guess I, that's what I'm asking, where, where you guys stand on that? Because right now, it's on the FY '24 project, five-year capital, and by the time you go through your feasibility study, your procure, all that other stuff, the three months there, I mean, 24, you're looking at 2030 before we're probably going to see the fruits or somewhere shy of that of a new addition or whatever the case may be. That's over 10 years away. I don't know if that, that would be the right prudent thing to do. That's for you, for you guys to decide.
Yeah, I can just add my two sentences. After our last meeting with Senator Lesser, I actually went back and looked at that tape. I was not under the impression that this was a maybe. I thought it was a foregone conclusion that we were going to get that money, it was just was just a matter of time. And I didn't think it would also potentially go years before that time would come true. So, that was maybe a little misconception that I had. So, we have to decide, you know, if we don't want to wait for the money. He alluded to a Plan B, which is asking for a smaller amount and then getting it as a specific line item in the budget.
Right.
Which could or could not happen either. But it's some better than nothing, you know, and we could just wait in perpetuity here. So, I guess, I was rethinking that myself because I was not aware that that's just an open-ended thing. And if they do it, they do it. If they don't, and it doesn't seem like, you know, even if we follow up with them, there's probably a lot of other projects that seem to, you know, they're going to be on that radar as well. So, it's probably worth trying to follow up with Senator Lesser, see if they can get any indication for us. And if it's muddy waters, then maybe we have to assess Plan B, do a feasibility study, move forward, and put a plan in motion because it needs to be addressed. I think we all agree with that.
That's, oh, it's, yes.
Well, that's, that was a great point that you brought up. If we're planning on doing anything with that building, and it is an asset of the Talley Beesaw in Meadow, and there are 30-plus of our employees working there in the capacity of public safety, it's a no-brainer that, yeah, we have to do something with the building. So, if we're going to do something with the building, the $25,000 is not going to be a waste of money. And there's a very good shot that if we lay that money out, based on a conversation that we just had, that we'll probably get it back. And you found 36,000 with the fence, and you found another 579,000 that was allocated for cells. So, that's all good news, right?
Well, we always had that cells as a place marker to make sure that we kept the state happy and compliant, like we do with the landfill.
So, the delta of the two items we're talking about is basically the feasibility study and a truck to consider, so.
So, are we going to have follow-up with Senator Lesser?
I think so.
Are we going to, are we going to do it, or is Denise going to do it?
I think we should probably have-
I, Tom Florence and I can reach out to Michael Clark, his aide, and who is the person that you go through to get directly to Senator. That's easy enough for us to do this week.
Yeah, we'll put it, maybe put it on a future council comments or town manager comments to get a status report, maybe a month or a month and a half.
Easy enough to do.
Yeah.
Okay. The next item is from the school department, and that would be asbestos removal and carpet replacement of athletic offices for $24,162. And the committee also has this as a priority one and is recommending full appropriate approval of that project.
Yes.
Given the description, I think the project speaks for itself.
Right. It is not only a loss of use of the space, but it's a safety concern.
It's a health issue, right. And we don't want to be in a position where health and safety is ignored, if you will, and then it becomes a greater problem in and of itself or detrimental to employees and students.
Exactly.
Recreation department, the Pine Knoll upper lot, paving of that at $55,000. Again, this is a priority one, and the committee is recommending that.
Yes.
Well, we have Bruce here. Where are we with the admin building? I know we had some-
Finished.
It's finished? Totally done that?
No.
Great. Thank you.
So, according to the description in the notes here, should this project be funded and then completed, then the recreation department would relocate its administrative offices to Pine Knoll? Is that correct?
Well, that's, that's one of the end goals. So, before that they'd be able to move there, you'd still also have to pave the driveway up to there.
That's what I'm saying.
To make it all season. This is the upper lot.
Oh, the upper lot, okay.
This is the upper lot. So, for residents who come to use our beautiful facilities, we spent a lot of money on the pool and the facilities. The parking lot, you can't get a stroller or a wheelchair through there. There's lots of dangers of tripping and all of that. So, it would help to pave it and also make the parking easier because then, with assigned spots and lines in there and being able to expand it, you'd actually be able to fit more people with the camp and all of that. Then, what the plan is, is to come back in a future year for the paving of the driveway.
And so, at that point, then, the move could occur?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's something we're planning on doing this year.
The- Just the upper part?
Just the upper part this year.
Just the upper part, yeah.
And then probably the next year to do the driveway. Denise and I have been looking into some funding sources for that, which I don't really want to reveal just yet, just to see if they work. But that's why we wanted to split it up.
Who's yours?
I'm not telling.
Whatever rabbits you have in the hat, we can wait for till later.
I want to make sure it's doable before I promise something that can't happen.
Yeah. For the IT department, a town switch slash router upgrade, $70,122. Committee's recommending the whole project, also a priority one. Well, you can't use technology if you don't have proper infrastructure and router and switches. And that's the extent of my IT knowledge.
I think we've got a couple of questions. Maybe we can ask Ryan.
Mr. Ryan, right.
Sure. And we can maybe address a whole bunch of these things. So, Ryan, I see the, I don't really have a question on the first one. The second one, Chromebook devices, and then again, at the bottom of the first page, Chromebook replacements. So, the ones up top are net-new, and the ones down below are just-
Replaced.
Broken ones, out-of-date ones?
The first line, the one-to-one Chromebook devices?
Yeah.
Is a project working with the school department to have a Chromebook per student from grades two to 12.
Two or three. It says three here, but-
It's three. It's going to be two, but two's already there, so.
Yeah.
The one below is Chromebooks that are not in that plan. So, the library has Chromebooks, the public library. You guys have Chromebooks. The planning board does. This is to account for those replacements.
So, they're already existing. So, going back to staffing needs, when's the last time you've had a-
2003.
2003. And so, what's your, what's your level of volume at this point? I mean, is it realistic to say if we're approving these one-to-one Chromebooks that you're going to need additional staff to support it?
The challenging part will be this summer, when we have to do the shuffle. So, now, this isn't all for new devices. We're replacing a lot of them as well. We have about 900 of them that are aging out. So, a Chromebook from the date of release is covered for six-and-a-half years, guaranteed to work with anything that Google comes out with. We have 900 of them that are falling off that six-and-a-half-year shelf. So, in the one-to-one plan, we are replacing some of those, as well as getting the new devices. We need to have the quantity for every student. The one-to-one, or the non-one-to-one, the council, basically elected officials, as well as the public library ones, are the same thing. They're all the same model that are aging out.
So, your call volume now, the, you know, the requirements for support, and then you add these one-to-one, I mean-
It's going to be a busy summer, yeah.
I know you're jammed now.
Yeah.
You're basically understaffed now. So, I'm just trying to get a sense of what that would look like.
I know when we went through our budget priorities last year, the council had initially approved adding a position that was, you know, later unfunded. I did put that back in my budget submission. I haven't met with the town manager yet, but that's in there. And I also added two summer positions, mainly because-
That's your heavy task.
To help with the maintenance.
That's going to be crazy.
Yeah.
Like paid internships?
Yep. At a minimum wage.
I recall our conversation you and I had not too long ago about how many machines do you have if they were all online? How many machines would we have? Did you say 3,000?
3,000, probably 3,500 total devices.
Oh.
That includes switches and everything. As far as actual endpoints?
Yeah.
Probably around 2,500, which in 2003, we had about 900.
So, three times your-
Yeah.
And remind me again, maybe Superintendent Smith can answer this. The one-to-one device initiative, is that over how many years?
We've been working on it for the last four years. If we were funded at the 315,000, that would bring us into supplying grades three through 12.
Okay.
The 200,000, what we'll do now is we'll try to work down from the high school, because the high school has the graduation requirement. All grades this year are taking their state assessment online. So, that's three through 12. However, it's the ninth, 10th, and 11th graders that have the graduation requirement.
So, how many years would it take to fund? I guess I was under the impression last year it was like a three-year funding project to get to where you want it to be.
We had it, so that big shelf I was talking about for replacements, what we had did to smooth out that first year down to 315,000 was, we were only going to replace half of the ones that we need to replace. And then, I think the number for new equipment-
681.
We need 681 devices to get us the quantity for a full one-to-one.
Okay.
And the majority of that's at the high school.
And down the road, do you see a K to 12, or you're just, or you're thinking just a two to 12?
Right now, we're thinking two to 12. Pretty much pre-K through one are dealing with-
Tablets?
Tablets, correct.
Yeah, we have pretty high saturation tablets in Meadowbrook.
And this is not relative to capital planning, but just a global question about the one-to-one. Would it be your goal down the road to, the town would own them, but would you, at some point, see yourself allowing the kids to take the machine home with them?
So, we would start to structure that program in-
Pilot it at some point?
Right. Right now, we actually are piloting with our community action learning class. So, we have about 30, or maybe even a little higher, 60.
60, I think it's two classes.
Yeah. 60 students right now through the community action learning course, where they're allowed to take it home and use it for other courses and so forth.
But that's something that's on the radar to think about?
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Especially the secondary level.
The elementary would probably operate where they have machines on a daily basis.
Right, but not to take home.
But they would stay in the classroom, correct?
Any other questions around that? Okay. So, we are down to public works equipment, the John Deere 3038E tractor for $27,500. The committee is recommending the entire And Bruce, is this simply a replacement of a machine that's seen its better day? Yes. The existing machine, I believe, is about 25 years old and no longer is running. Can't buy parts for it anymore. We use this for fertilizing our fields, air raiding, and things of that nature. So, we currently have been borrowing or renting Mr. Armaz's tractor for this past season. Okay. The next three are back to IT, but I think we've spoken about them. Student MacBook replacements?
I have a question now.
I'm sorry.
With the student MacBook replacements?
Yep.
This is the first time I've seen a committee recommend more money?
No.
Just a clarification.
Yeah.
Add those three together.
What we're doing is pooling-
Those three.
The student MacBook replacements, the student iPad replacements, and the Chromebook replacements.
And one more stat.
To one recommendation for 50,000.
So, combining which three items?
Look how the chart goes.
I'm looking right there. I don't see what they're talking about.
If you look to the right, you can see how the committee priority one is like a bigger block.
Yeah.
So, they pulled those four projects into-
Yeah. Well, I see what you're talking about, yeah.
They gave you zero.
Yeah. No, I see that. But you're combining 48,000, 43,000, and 27,000 into 50,000, so.
And 76.
Yeah.
So, it's 200,000, and we're running it to 4.
So, is that going to, I mean, what is it going to fund? I mean-
It's, well, I assume that one would maybe ask Ryan to come up with another plan that he would be able to deal with. Obviously, he wouldn't be able to do everything that he's looking to do from his request. But hopefully, between taking a little bit more, you know, things don't necessarily go break when they lose support. You know, between that and his operating budget for repairs, you know, he could make do. So, it would really be a request probably back to information technology to develop a plan based on that. Some of it is, you know, contingency. You don't know what's going to happen. And again, trying to weigh the priorities of everything involved. We certainly felt like something had to be funded, but perhaps we could, you know, make do with it.
Yeah. So, since we've seen, since I've seen the recommendations of the student MacBook replacements is our last wave of MacBook Pros that we have at Maple Shade School. And I met with the principal there, and since the one-to-one project is being partially funded, he's comfortable with us just retiring those devices, which gives us the money to the iPads that we have at Meadowbrook, which is for the pre-Ked first graders primarily. Those are like the original iPads. So, you know, their software's out of date. The apps don't work on them anymore. So, that's really what we're probably going to focus our replacements on.
Okay. So, you have a plan, at least?
Yeah. Now that we've seen the recommendations and seen where we are, now, you know, got to roll with the punches.
Okay.
But the 50,000 would put you in a reasonable position?
Yep. Because the main one on the bottom, the staff MacBook replacements?
Yeah.
That's a primitive to give them in this cycle.
Yeah.
Because they're about five, four years old now, four or five years old.
Yeah, that was 76,000 alone.
Yeah.
That's still going to meet the needs of the schools?
Yep. That won't increase for next year.
Phase in approaching it?
So, next year, you'll still see the 76-410.
Okay.
But it won't be an increase.
Right. It's not going to be.
A year after that, it's a different story, but-
Okay. And then, switching from computers to the next one, which is phone upgrades across the town offices and schools for $38,107, also funded at full level. I think that probably speaks for itself because many of them are at end-of-life or the tech support is difficult to get.
Yeah. We have about 450 phones on our phone system. We have classroom phones in every school except for the high school. The senior center, Town Hall, Meadowbrook, and Maple Shade were really our first wave in our phone project. And all those phones, their end, life-end of support, as it says. And we can't upgrade our server software because if we do, these phones won't work anymore because of the age of them. So, we need to upgrade the phones so then we can upgrade the server side.
Well, that also goes to public safety when you get right down to it, the communication in the building.
Yep. It's a big, it's a network security thing, too.
Yes.
Quick question. Are these VoIP type phones?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm just reading this one.
Okay. The next item is public works equipment, Bobcat number 53 for $46,000, funded, recommended at the 100% level. And Bruce?
Just have a quick question.
Yeah.
If it's junked, is there any scrap value? Is there any-
There is probably a little bit of trade-in value, probably just for parts, maybe a couple thousand dollars, but that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's almost 30 years old. But another one that needs to be retired?
Couldn't make it to 30, you made it to 29?
It's like you said, it was our yard machine. We used it to unload trucks and things of that nature for the past probably five, six years. That's why it never left the yard. So, now it's obviously not running anymore. So. Fair enough. While you're still there, the next project is the annual sidewalk construction. Your request, I believe this has been annual, yes? $150,000? Um, yes, we were not- But now, the recommendation is to fund at 75? Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. If I, my understanding is, we had a kind of an informal commitment to try to fund $75,000 a year for sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that was back-
About eight years ago.
In Slocum days, et cetera. And I think the request was 150, because I'm not sure that we funded the 75,000 last year.
Right. This is the first, I guess, the first time in a few years this request has been funded. So, we were putting in a pot of money because $75,000 doesn't really get you very far when you're doing sidewalks. To give an example, I believe, Tom, what was it? How many feet on Elm Street?
Seventy. It was 70 bucks a foot.
70 bucks a-
75,000 dollars gets you about 1,000 feet.
Right. So, the sidewalk on Elm Street is about $115,000. So, it doesn't get you very far, obviously, so.
But it created that pool for you to start to look at bigger projects and then pull the money, and wait a couple of years, and then do a big project.
Exactly. And that's the plan. I do have a sidewalk map if the council would like to see that. We- You may have given that to us once before. I think you may have given that to us once before.
Yeah.
And so, like, how much is left? I mean, it's still quite a bit, right?
For sidewalks, there's a lot of work to be done, but there's no money to do it.
No, actually, we will be coming to the next council meeting to request the difference between what it costs and what was in the fund. There's a hundred and eight in the fund, and sidewalk cost a hundred and fifteen for Elm Street. So currently, we funded it out of operations, out of the highway operations, but we'll be asking for free cash to cover that difference instead of out of operations. There is no money in the sidewalk fund anymore.
And these things keep adding up, but so you're looking at a thousand feet? Is that?
Right, so depending on.
It's gonna take us forty years to, we're gonna be replacing sidewalks before we get even close to end the job here.
Given the request, that's why I put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there to get a little more, a little more done, but like you said, you have financial constraints and everything else, so.
Yeah, understood.
The optimal goal, is it to fund, as it relates to sidewalks, never mind money right this minute, but is the optimal goal to put sidewalks throughout our entire geographical town or just through the, I don't wanna say metropolitan?
It's actually, there used to be a committee between the police department, I believe, the school department, and the DPW. And I believe the original plan was to stay kind of school-centric, especially for the walkers and the young children around town. So like you said, Parker Street, we did do that a few years ago, I can't believe, four or five years ago. I'd like to connect that to Hampden Road, so that whole chain is connected. And there's some other areas I'd like to extend down Elm Street a little more. So it's basically that whole.
Radius of the various schools.
Schools, because like you said, you know, obviously, bus fees and everything else are pretty expensive, so giving the kids a safe way to travel to school, so I know one of those really difficult locations was Elm Street. So therefore, we kind of went off our, didn't follow our original plan and add the sidewalks on Elm Street, given the need.
I know this is probably not a question you yourself can answer at this time, but it's something I want to throw back out there. About three or four years ago, we had a discussion about the funding of that seventy-five thousand on a regular basis, meeting every year. And we were looking at options and viable options. And one of them was, instead of putting sidewalks, developers putting sidewalks in a cul-de-sac, was to charge a fee or have them pay that fee that would cost them to do that work and put that towards the fund to put sidewalks in a location where it makes sense.
Yes.
Is that still moving forward, or is that just?
There is no vehicle right now in place to do that.
So that, that's just kind of fell through?
I believe so, yes.
Nothing's been done, okay.
Yes. There's bylaws and things that need to be addressed when it comes to things like that.
Okay, also, under your department, Bruce, roadway improvement, the request was six hundred thousand, the recommendation is one hundred. Again, the rationale is probably parallel?
Well, you kind of take the sidewalk discussion and just multiply it times ten.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
And Bruce, stop me whenever I misspeak, but we used to use the chapter two ninety monies to repair our roadways. And I think at this point, that money is insufficient to keep the maintenance of our roadways going. And a study was done several years ago.
Yes.
And predicted what type of funding would be needed to actually bring our roads into repair and maintain them that way. And it's a stunning number.
Yes.
And the six hundred thousand you see here is really coming from the study, but it still isn't even enough to keep the roadways at a level of repair. It still degrades as time goes on. So it's kind of a, I'm not sure that the solution is a town-specific solution. I think the solution's gonna have to be bigger than East Long Meadow because it affects everybody. So we certainly understand and appreciate what Public Works has done to analyze it and to develop and demonstrate the need. And there's certainly a need for this funding, but because it still wouldn't be effective, for that amount that would come out of our capital budget and sacrifice other things, we didn't fund at that level. We did feel that it was an important thing to do, so we funded it at some level, which you see at the hundred thousand dollar recommendation. And I think at some point, we'll have to work with other towns and state reps, et cetera, to figure out a better way of funding, you know, the maintenance of our roads.
If we had funded the full amount, it would be half of what we're proposing for capital, so we felt it was better to give some and at least start, like the OPEB, do a little bit to start and then keep trying to grow.
Yeah, and I do. Well, just a quick question, so barring, just to follow up on that, you know, barring the state coming in and allocating funds, and matter of fact, I was just listening to the news, and I thought Whately got like a hundred thousand dollar grant for some road repairs. I just heard that the other day. But, so what is the other alternative? Is this where you look at a, you know, map it out over a couple of years and potentially bond for this and do a big chunk? Because I don't see, we have other issues the state needs to bail us out on. I don't see them knocking our door down to help us on them. So I guess I'm just wondering, because, you know, I can tell you, walking on my street, how many complaints I get, how bad it is, and it's bad, you're looking at dirt and certain sections of it, you know. Yeah, you got a tough number. Yeah, I know. And we're, you know, we're not a main road, so point, I guess that's where I'm looking, like, so when do we address the bigger concern?
Well, we're working, and Tom's kind of my pavement management expert. Part of that process, we came to you for the complete streets. So part of that process, when we adopt the complete streets, we get qualified for, to start, I guess, putting our hat in the ring for tip projects. One of our main thoroughfares here is North Main Street. It's getting in pretty poor shape all the way from the center, all the way down to the city line. It, I guess, checks a lot of the boxes that the, I believe, Mass DOT is the one that's gonna fund that. And there's a lot of things that go into that, that process. We have a senior center, is there bus routes, sidewalks, signal improvement. So we are in the process to try to look at other alternatives for funding. But like you said, the process takes time, you're talking five, six years. So we are looking at other ways to fund things like this, so it's just a matter of, like you said, just keeping our heads on the pavement, I guess you could say, and keep moving forward. So like you said, I don't think in the past either, any previous superintendent has actually put any kind of pavement on a capital request list. But like you said, if you've seen the volume of calls we get on a daily basis, and these are for little side streets that are falling apart, but part of our responsibility is making sure where the heavy traffic is and everything else take priority. And we did a pavement management plan back in two thousand seventeen that we try to follow. So like you said, it's constantly changing and moving, and there's just not enough money.
Again, it reels back to a point that I've made a few times in my tenure on this council, is we really, 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 really need to get streets accepted, even if they're close, but no cigar, make it the cigar. We really need to do it. We need to get, we need to get, we have streets with bonding money pushing twenty years, okay? We have things like that. We just gotta push them because we're not gonna get the two ninety money at all on these streets. We have, you know, I mean, I remember one time we had a street that it defaulted, town meeting, we ended up approving it to make it a street. And that's the only street in my twenty-one-year tenure on the planning board that we never forced a sidewalk in, little segue from our previous comments. That's part of the plan because the state asked us to try to improve more walking, more pedestrian stuff. So we had every subdivision that, I don't know how the current planning board is, but I can tell you from nineteen eighty-eight to two thousand and eleven, every subdivision except the one that defaulted, and we had to do the right thing through town meetings to fix that, we had a sidewalk, even so forth. But we need to get streets off the private way, but more importantly, off the approved but not accepted list. I think we all remember the days of town meeting, and I don't think there was any annual town meeting where we didn't have one or two streets for approval. We have not had one as this council, not one. And I think that should be our challenge, is to try to increase the opportunity to get money from the state by doing that, because we're gonna be fixing it anyway. If you're paying eight, nine thousand dollars a house, you know, you should be entitled, and you have a street that was approved by the town of East Long Meadow, I mean, the subdivision approved, but because we're not taking the efforts to get the bonding money and to finish the street and to make it a public street, we still owe the citizens that duty. And I think that's, that's a high priority. We really gotta put that, prioritize it as getting those streets from approved to accepted.
I believe you guys did receive my letter, my draft letters from Denise for that reason.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Paper streets that I'm responsible for.
Right.
Those letters will be going out this week, just.
And so we're gonna be taking ownership in a sense.
Well, I'm giving the contractor the opportunity with a completion date. If they do not make, give me that completion date, we'll be going after the bond money. But the amount of money you're talking about, as far as some of the paper streets, I don't think it's gonna impact us on our chapter ninety that much.
Just a little, like what, two miles we're talking about?
I don't even know if it's that one, yeah, but anyways.
Two miles a year.
What's that, Tom?
Miles a year, that's what we got, that's our budget.
Two miles, right.
Out of a hundred plus.
Wow.
Yeah. So we're not winning the battle, I guess you could say. So anyways, we're doing what we can, obviously looking at other funding sources, so.
I mean, doesn't it make sense at some point, I don't know if it's this year or next year, to, you know, give a hundred thousand out of six hundred, when we should be looking at, instead of two miles, we should try and tackle ten, or what, I mean, and look at it in a different matter than a, than a capital. I mean, I just, I don't think it's enough. I don't, and like Sarah was saying, I mean.
Treat it like the.
You're gonna blow, you're gonna blow this capital budget out if you add, we're at one point three, add six hundred a thousand, you know, we're at over two, two point five.
Now, what we could do, and this is an idea, is we could add that as a normal line on our operating budget, like we have for stabilization, compensated absences, OPEB, that kind of a thing. We could do that, and therefore, it not come out of the capital budget would still be, any work that you're doing to it is still a capital project that you do that has to be approved, but we could use that as the funding source instead of, out of this normal kind of capital, if you wanted to be able to really highlight it, to put away the money for it. We could do something like that. There are several vehicles from an accounting finance standpoint that we can do to make that happen, but that would have to be some direction from the council, and Denise and I can absolutely do that to the budget.
There would be some sense to that because the six hundred is just this year, and the study actually says you need to spend six hundred every year, and you're still not quite spending what you need to. So it really is an ongoing.
It's a battle.
Challenge, not a, it doesn't get fixed with the six hundred in capital. So it really isn't a good capital project entity for us.
Quick question from Bruce. At what point, in terms of like, you know, two miles, that's doable with our present staff, right?
Right. Well, that's for, that's with chapter ninety, we bid that out every year.
No, I mean, let's just say, well, how many miles do you, in your perfect world, without hiring new people, do you think your crew could handle in a year?
We don't actually do paving. We patch potholes, we replace berm that we rip up. So we actually, we don't have a paving machine, so.
Is it worth getting a paving machine? I'm just asking.
Well, then, you need the right equipment, so we, I tried to do that last year on Woodbridge, but our trucks aren't suited for that type of work. They don't have the right dump bodies or anything else on them. So we have chutes, but they're for wheelbarrows, not for a paving machine. So there's a lot of equipment also that you need to purchase. So, so if we get into road improvements, we would need to get a milling machine, how they mill the roads, or we can have them, it's, you're.
Okay, no mas.
Yes, yes.
Forget it.
We have to have them in cereal.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea, but.
Yeah.
And then staff to do it.
Staff.
Staff that are qualified, that have benefits.
And while we're on the subject of road construction, I don't know if there's any oversight, but, you know, years and years ago, a lot of roads were designed to handle residential traffic. And what's changed, especially in the town of Long Meadow, is that there's so many eighteen-wheelers and, you know, people coming into East Long Meadow, cutting through wherever they're going, Connecticut, whatever, but they're using the roads, and the equipment that they're running over, running over our roads with is annihilating them. So I'm just wondering, is there any oversight into the infrastructure underneath the roads? Let's take a residential neighborhood of approximately services twenty residents where you know you're not gonna have eighteen-wheelers hauling heavy equipment down those roads. So is there two different standards on how our roads are built?
Currently, there is not, and Tom knows better than I do, but currently, we require twelve inches of hard pack under each one of our roads, whether or not that was followed in the past, but moving forward, that's what we require. Those are DOT specifications that we do follow, that's what they recommend. So I don't know if that.
Could I ask, has that changed over the years?
I don't.
I mean, has it gotten, have you asked for more gravel underneath based on the weight and the number of vehicles that are?
As far as I know, no, and I'm pretty new at this, the last couple of years, so I'm learning a lot when it comes to paving.
Yeah.
But that's our current, our current way of doing business is to follow Mass DOT specifications, and it's, I think it's a high bar, I guess you could say.
And that's for, so for a subdivision, this is all under the subdivision bylaw? That's our spec. So you're talking about a side street.
Right.
There's no Denzil Road going in, where that's up to us when we fix the road. If it needs base replacement, we have to replace it. And of course, that's our whole budget, if you wanna do a road, full rebuild, that's it.
Yeah, so prior.
That's chapter ninety for the year.
Prior to the road becoming ours, the developers are putting the road in, and you guys just have to make, make sure that they're being built to the specifications because we're gonna own that road down the road, if you will. And, you know, if it's not built properly, obviously, once, once it's accepted, it used to be accepted at town, town meeting, now, now it's up to us, that's the point that you were driving on, Don.
And that's gonna be hard to find out these roads that we wanna take, where they're built that way, and do we have to go rebuild them before we can really?
Well, where you guys got boxed in a little bit, too, is you gotta have enough bond money, you can't, if there's, if only, if somebody only has a specified amount of bond money and to finish, finish the development is three times that, of course, they're gonna walk away from the bond money because the amount wasn't predicated on, you know, proper cost of the project. So then the residents, we, you know, we end up eating that in the end, but as long as everybody's aware of things like that.
Yep, we got a good inspection program going forward, making sure that all the new developments are built properly. So I can't speak to what was done in the past, but I can see some of the, some of the areas that weren't done properly. So moving forward, we will do our, do our best to make sure they're built properly.
Yeah, thanks.
Yep.
Okay, then, also, under public works, a town hall trailer mount generator, one hundred and fifty kilowatts.
Yes.
Wasn't that a timely request?
Yes.
When you think about last Monday's outage at Village Green with two hundred-plus users needing some help.
Yep, so this request, it's, I believe it's been on the plan for a few years. This is to power the entire town hall. Currently, we have two generators on site that backup IT servers and the cooling system for there, but that is it. So if power does go out, we do not have any ability to provide power for the town hall. I think it's pretty important that the town hall, given the people that sit in those offices, have power during emergencies. So this is a trailer-mounted unit, just because we don't have the real estate at the town hall to put a pad mount generator, so this will be stationed, obviously, when power goes out, to a disconnect and a feed system into our electrical system there.
Does that pretty much round out the generator requirements for the town buildings?
No. It all depends on who you ask, Tom.
I know we've been rolled in for years.
Yeah, well, we have seventeen now, this will be eighteen. We do have two other mobile units, I believe, a hundred KW unit and a thirty KW unit that is used for our pump stations for backups. is used for our pump stations for backups. Um, so as far as I'm concerned, like you said, for town buildings, I think we're in good shape. We have one here, uh, police and fire have one. I don't believe, uh, library is necessarily a, uh, an emergency building in case of power outages. Um, the only other areas I could think of is maybe the school department, uh, one of their buildings in the future, um, but they do have Birchland Park, so I don't know how Mr. Smith feels about getting another generator and having another EOC at one of his buildings. Um, but as far as I'm concerned, I think this will probably wrap up generators, obviously, uh, moving forward, it would just be replace some of the old ones. We did do Allen Street, that was a 1978 generator. We just actually, um, finishing up that project, um, right now, so. And I know, um, the chestnut generator is, uh, slated for repairs at, at some point in time, so to answer your question, yes, um, moving forward, it'll probably be just to replace some of our old, old units.
So this unit would work in the town hall.
Yes.
Specifically, but it's also has another benefit which is being trailer mounted if a school.
It can dock.
It can, it, we can automatically plug into a school.
Police, fire, in case their generator goes down. Yep, absolutely.
If the town hall's still.
Right, so that's, um, that's why we got that other unit also, um, especially for our violent pump station, our Watchog Station, um, those are big pump stations, so if any of those generators, um, were to fail, um, we do have, um, temp taps out at each one of those sites. We haven't put them in yet, but these are kind of in conjunction, so you have redundancy for the, uh, for the existing generator, so, um, we're trying to obviously be prepared in case of any, any failures, uh, may happen down the road.
Good. Quick question, is, uh, this building set up that we could plug a generator in?
We have one.
We have one?
But if this generator was to fail.
Yep.
That being trailer mounted, let's just say the town hall's powered up and this building isn't.
The switches, are, are, are there change of them?
Um, no, uh, the temp taps are, so if you have a transfer switch that's dedicated for that, um, alone, so the temp taps actually, uh, work in conjunction with, well, don't work in conjunction, it's a separate system onto our transfer switch, so there's some wiring, um, electrical things that need to be done.
In an emergency, on a pinch, you could do it.
Right, but yes, plug and play, that's the whole, um, the whole nature of it, yes.
I would think down the road, if we're fortunate enough to be selected for a new high school, you wouldn't, that would get included in the, the price tag.
Sure.
It makes good sense to do that.
That'd be a good question for the MSBA, see if they even fund generators, so.
They probably don't, since you're.
I don't know.
But what I'm saying is.
Yes, absolutely.
As you look at a new footprint, you create a pad.
Sure.
Similar to Birchland and, and makes sense town-wise.
Yes.
Put one there.
Absolutely.
And while we're talking about generators, um, the generator in the police department, that's, that's internal and it's diesel, isn't it?
Uh, that's natural gas.
Okay.
That's slated, I believe, on my capital plan and my five-year plan to replace at some point.
I was just going to say, that's got to be coming, uh.
Well, my plan was with the office expansion that I put together, that was part of that, that, that program, I believe, is to move the generator outside, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
I guess it would come up in a feasibility study as well, if, if we get that far, so.
So generator, yes, I have it slated for $31,200 for next year's capital improvement plan, 50 KW unit to move that outside.
Okay, so that concludes the initial capital projects recommendation for a total of, it recommended $1,237,292. So percentage-wise, is that like a 1.5%?
Uh, no, it's just over two. If you look at the very last page of your, your, um, packet.
Yep.
Um, it falls between the 2% and the 2.5%.
And that is pretty consistent with historically what we're, we feel we're able to, well, I know year to year, the different emergencies arise, but.
The, the past few years, we've funded around a million dollars, just over a million. Um, last year, we funded a little bit less, um, but the town council had wanted to, to make cuts and that's where we made the cuts and did free cash instead. So that's why we, we picked that as a goal, was to have right around the same dollar amount, we wanted to make you aware of the percentage. Um, as we've talked about, there are many projects here that we either did smaller or, or had to put in a lower priority because we felt that we had only that bucket of money. If the town council wishes for us to, um, use a higher percentage of the prior year budget, by all means, we, we definitely have, um, projects that are worthy of that, um, but we didn't know what direction the council wanted us to go in. Um, given that 0%, we thought that that was more in line with, with the 0% request.
In fact, the last slide is on that page is capital projects approved for fiscal year 2019. You approve, you approve $744,494 or 1.3%. Okay, does the committee council wish to continue with, um, the rest of the chart
If, if I may, I would at least recommend, um, going through the rest of the, the general fund, um, kinds of items, so even though those next couple of items that we recommend, but we, we aren't recommending for the funding, that we have other funding sources.
Yep.
It still would be very helpful for us as a committee to understand, you know, what your questions might be and whether you'd be supportive of these types of projects.
And is it fair to say the projects that are coming from the sewer or water enterprise funds are capable of being funded from their own, from each fund's resources?
So the sewer, um, enterprise fund, yes, could, could fund it from its current sources from, from what we're projecting for the budget.
Sure.
Um, and the water enterprise fund would need to be bonded, um, for any of their projects, um.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question there?
Absolutely.
So when you say you can fund it from existing sources, does that mean that there's an increase to the residents for additional fees to support these projects?
The water and sewer, to begin with, as we discussed last year when we were talking about the budget, is that the water and sewer fees are going up. The Springfield, um, water and sewer, um, bills have gone up significantly, the, the funds can't support them without increasing fees, so no matter what, fees do have to go up.
Right, and so would this be an additional increase on top of what we're projecting, what we know to be on already?
Yes.
And did it increase?
Yep, whether you bond for it or whether you pay for it flat out, yes. Currently, so for example, the, um, Bruce and I worked to, together to say, okay, if we were to keep things pretty much the same or, or at a level kind of a basis, how much will we have left in sewer? So sewer had free cash approved of $633,000. So once you remove any of the free cash that we've done from there, once you remove this $247,000, that leaves us with $200,000 in the sewer, um, free cash. That's it. Remember though, that we just came last week for those propellers, which was $50,000, so that's 25, that, 25% of the entire pot that you have for sewer, if you were to keep everything the same. It's recommended at least a million dollars should be in each of these funds just in case, so having $200,000 is not even close to being enough.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does.
I'm sorry, not a funny answer.
I didn't like the answer, but.
Springfield Water and Sewer gives us with $149,000 true up this year, so that really impacted our budget.
So at the next council meeting, we'll be coming for $160,000 out of that free cash to pay for that bill.
Got it.
And if I recollect, last year, we were, what increases they passed along to you then, we were trying as best we could to absorb from our own cushion, if you will.
And we were short.
The cushion is, is really, really down.
Yeah. We've eaten into the cushion too much, it's, there's no cushion.
Losing Monsanto as a customer wasn't, wasn't good for anyone.
So like you said, um, Springfield Water and Sewer passes all those, those costs on to the, to the people that they obviously do a business with, so.
And that was a good customer.
And I'll be, like you said, I'll be discussing it further, what else they're going to be doing in the upcoming years, that's going to impact us, so it's not looking good.
No, the, and keep in mind though, I don't know how much comfort it gives, but, um, the, the DPW board has for many years tried to, to only do small increases, which was nice in those years, but eventually it catches up with you and unfortunately, that's where we are.
And also, and I don't mean to interrupt anybody, but, um, the DEP has a lot to do with this too. They're requiring us to do, do more work for our inflow and infiltration, our clear water disconnect program, I believe you guys are, uh, have been notified about.
Yep.
So we're doing our best to offset or mitigate some of these expenses, but it's going to take time and it's going to take money, um, unfortunately, so.
Okay.
This may be just jumping ahead a little bit, but are the funds able to sustain the bonding payments that are recommended from those funds?
Yes, we put that into the budget, when Bruce and I worked together to, to work on the budget for those enterprise funds and we did incorporate that into there.
So the, the bonding payments of, for the projects that will be bonded on those funds, they're able to pay on those funds?
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's at least comforting.
Yeah, and, and, and that's how we, we then looked at everything to say, okay, are we recommending bonding, are we recommending the full amount and, and what do you do? And some projects, as we've discussed before, it just doesn't make sense to bond it, it's not a project that's going to, to have that kind of a useful life, or for instance, the inflow and infiltration, um, because it's part of the state and Bruce working with it, it's kind of hard to say, okay, what's the useful life of that because it's, it's so many moving pieces, so that's a bit harder to do a bonding for.
Okay, then we need now to discuss, uh, five or six projects, five projects here that, uh, the, your committee is recommending to be sourced through, um, different means in the operational budget. The first one is, uh, roofs again, Public Works Highway. An LED street light purchase slash conversion for $579,064.
Um, yes, this is through an RFP I did back in August for Real Term Energy, uh, I actually was the winning, um, person, uh, through that RFP. So this is to purchase the streetlights, um, retrofit or put new fixtures up, also smart control system, um, that's, uh, which would be included, would be cameras for the police department to have access to, um, and I believe the initial, uh, cameras was about 25 camera, but have the ability, um, in the future to add more cameras. Also, um, part of this, uh, smart control system is to notify us when a street light is out, um, so not this guessing game or.
Somebody calling in to say.
Calling in and keeping track of these things, so it's a pretty straightforward, uh, program. Um, I don't know if anybody has actually looked through the, uh, the packet when it comes to the streetlights, so, um, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. I'm actually meeting with Joanne DeRose on Thursday this week, um, she works for National Grid, um, she wanted to meet with me just to discuss what it entails once we do purchase them and the amount of responsibility, um, the town is going to have by maintaining them. So I am making sure that if we do decide to move forward with this, um, that we have all our ducks in a row. Um, I also, um, applied for a grant and I don't know if Denise has shared that with you, uh, like, I believe last week or the week before, the MAPC, um, had a grant program in place, um, it's for $400,000 to, uh, do our lights, convert them, purchase and convert them to LEDs. I don't know enough about the program yet because we're in preliminary stages, I haven't received the grant, I just applied for a grant, I don't know if it's going to be everything that we want, um, but part of that, that program, the cost to the town would be significantly less, um, about $127,000. But like you said, I don't know what it entails, the type of fixture, so, and like you said, we still looking at other opportunities for funding a lot of these projects, I don't know if it's going to be something we want to move forward with, um, so anyways.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, vehicle replacements for building and IT, I think we in previous discussions hit on that topic.
Hand me that.
Recommended for, um, repurposed vehicles.
Yep.
And this third one, the life pack monitored defibrillator, the chief has, um, explained that as well. School department, Mountain View replaced portable modular trailer classroom with a permanent structure. This is a, a big ticket item.
So, uh, this one and the next one are both, um, larger school projects.
Yep.
Um, that, um, we are recommending for bonding. Um, I do want to take a moment to remind everybody that, um, we have been accepted for the MSBA Accelerator Repair Program for the roof. If you recall, last year at this, um, for the capital that we had approved doing the schematic design. Um, and so we, they, um, have just, uh, given us a number for it, so that will be asked for bonding, but in the current fiscal year, not in next year. So that's why you don't see it on this list because it has to be in this current fiscal year.
But that's for Meadowbrook.
That's for Meadowbrook.
Excuse me, yes. Um, but just in case you're like, hey, where is that one?
Right, gotcha.
Just to give you a heads up.
It's pretty straightforward. Anybody have anything else?
The big ticket items, but, uh, they're necessary.
Yep.
They've been on the capital planning for quite some time and the replacement of the doors is absolutely a necessity.
Security and energy efficiency.
Okay, so I believe we've, um, climbed through all of the, uh, items here with some good dialogue about how, how and why they're there, and so, uh, we'll wait for Denise to, at some point, to present to us the line item budget by departments. And as Don said, it probably makes the most sense for things that we've said should be included, uh, that weren't on your list, to look at that in, in its entirety when we have a bigger, uh, and greater idea of the, the full picture.
So at this point, do you want us, some of the items you talked about, and I'm not quite clear whether everyone was on board for some of the items or just a few of the folks, so should we at this point put all of those items on there to show, uh, I want to say worst-case scenario, or do you want us to, to stick with more, or do you want to give me an idea now as to?
No, probably because we, we're not required to vote on these tonight.
We're not, no, we're not.
And need to reflect on some of them. I do, I need to, to do a little bit more.
And that's fine.
You know, I mean, I think the only thing on here that I, I personally felt probably doesn't belong in here and should be addressed in a bigger way, uh, was the, the highway. You know, that, to me, that makes sense to find an alternative to, to do more than, because it's not, it's not enough.
Mm-hmm.
And it probably shouldn't be on a capital, yeah, so. Uh, but other than that, I mean, I, we just, you know, so we have our normal, regular meeting next and we'll have an opportunity to digest it.
I wouldn't put them in right this minute.
Okay.
I would just wait until we get to the end of the next presentation of, on the line item budget and then we make some decisions, as well as we have a, uh, a standing subcommittee, a standing committee for, uh, financial oversight, so we might even, uh, refer it to that at that point for their recommendation back to the seven of us.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions on the water or sewer enterprise projects? I know we're not going through them line by line, but just in case, I want to make sure that we clarify any answers, any questions while we do have TPW here and while we're here and still have time to put in whatever research might be necessary if we don't already know the answer to your questions. We're running short on time.
I'm good, they're all essential things that need to be done, uh, and.
I think we're all comfortable with that, right?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Well, to the Sarah and Denise's committee, Jim and Jim, also who's not here, and Jean, thank you very much, uh, your concerted effort and experiences in the past with financials, uh, has been a big plus for Sarah and Denise to help, uh, sort this out and vet it and do the very best we can, so we thank you for that, as well as our department heads who were good enough to come this evening and provide backup information. If the committee, if no one else on the council, um, has questions.
I move to adjourn.
Then we need to move to adjourn. So we, um, are adjourning at seven, excuse me, 6:51 PM, we'll be back in session for our regular scheduled meeting, um, on, thank you, March, now I lost my number.
12.
12. And before we can adjourn, we do have to take a vote. Um, all those in favor of adjourn?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
So we, again, are adjourned at 6:51. Thank you and good evening.
Good night, we.